Shayla, may we please have roll call?
Vice Mayor Miller, sound check. Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Here.
Commissioner Witt. Yep, we're good to go. Thank you.
Present.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Awesome. Thank you.
Present.
Mr. Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call to order the February tenth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas, City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Witt.
Present.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Present.
Mr. Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll call is complete.
If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, and our first item is approval of today's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we would roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes from the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, and I would entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we would roll call vote. Commissioner Witt.
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is public comments and communications, public forum. If there's anyone that would like to address an item that's not currently on our agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on the agenda?
It will be my pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You'll have to forgive me. I do have some prepared comments, but I've gotten some new information here that was at my desk that I feel like needs to be addressed, so I'm going to address that at the same time here. I have frequently expressed and will continue to share my concerns about the city manager's ability to effectively lead, manage resources, and be accountable to the the community and our elected officials. This lack of open communication with residents, business, and local government stakeholders is leading to frustration and mistrust. Our city has a need for a city manager who can actively promote business growth, infrastructure improvements, and responsible planning. While most of you are not aware, there is a business that has been actively trying to locate in our community for almost three years and having been met with nothing but roadblocks from the city. Recently, Mr. Marsh, seemingly on his own without commission approval, decided to delay the project to maintain the streets on our most important thoroughfare, Buckeye Avenue, between the railroad and Fifth Street. He has repeatedly stated that this is a million-dollar project and has been unwilling to look at alternatives that would limit or eliminate the expenditure of our local funds for the project. Well, he's demanding that we spend your hard-earned tax dollars on four blocks of city streets. Recently, the Department of Transportation just approved an overlay project for under a million dollars, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-four cents, or six miles of highway. His latest scheme to issue bonds for three projects, the industrial park, the street project I just mentioned, and the twenty twenty-sixth street project, which hasn't been authorized or approved by the commission. I just got a a letter from Jay Loosman, Water Treatment Plant Superintendent, suggesting that I have a personality disorder. And, well, I appreciate the feedback. I want to be very clear that all of my direction is only based on Mr. Marsh's performance in this office. I think that Mr. Marsh is probably a fine gentleman. In fact, I've enjoyed, I believe, a cigar and a whiskey with him on more than one occasion. And frankly, I would like to do that again when Mr. Marsh is in a position that fits his skills. I'm not going to stop. I will be here every single meeting. I will be repeating everything that needs to be repeated and holding this administration accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Seeing none, we will move into our business items under seven A. Resume public hearing from December ninth, twenty twenty-four for the purpose of showing cause why the structure located at sixteen oh one West First Street in Abilene, Kansas should not be condemned and ordered repaired or demolished. City Inspector Stearman.
I included a I included a site, a site plan in the packet. I have an updated one as of today. I went and visited the property and seen where they were located. Chair. As you can see with that map, the red block is what Rogers made progress on, and this is approximate. I would suggest it's over fifty percent of the roof is complete. There's still one part of the backside still needs to be done, and the east side of the front is the two, the backside west and the front side east are the two slopes that haven't haven't, he hasn't started on yet. You guys aren't getting questions from me? He's, he's, he's been working on it, but I mean, it's at a point now to where I think the city staff would recommend that if the, if the hearing is closed and he found it a dangerous structure, that the, it would go to repair instead of demolish because it's far enough along on that side.
My understanding is that even if we declared a dangerous structure, you still have some pretty broad latitude as to how the repairs proceed. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so. It's the roof isn't the, wasn't, not just the one thing that was on it. There was still, you know, some soffit and some other things that was needed to be repaired on it.
But, and just, my concern is that unless there's significant pressure placed on Mr. Seymour, that he's not going to do anything. And so my preferred approach would be to continue forward and name it a dangerous structure and then entrust you with making sure that those repairs are completed timely and we can see it again here if we need to.
Absolutely, I can do it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking as well, and it does go, nothing happens until the end of March anyway.
Correct. It'd be years, the deadline you guys would set.
Yep. I think we originally talked about that.
I think in our original petition, the timeline was March thirtieth, but I think you have the discretion if repairs are proceeding in the manner that you see as appropriate, that you can extend that.
Yeah, you, I think you guys can set it to this, you know, say basically that.
And City Attorney Martin, was it thirtieth, correct? Thirty to thirty-first, it was somewhere.
Yes, the resolution you have before you establishes a commencement deadline and a completion deadline. I will tell you that notwithstanding the completion deadline, if the owner is diligently performing the work toward completion, we should allow him to continue to do that, and that will be within Mr. Stearman's discretion as we approach that deadline of March, late March, whether or not the property owner is diligently pursuing the completion of that work. And if so, I'd recommend we come back and provide the city commission an update at that point. If not, I think we'd come back anyway and ask for confirmation for what the building officials should do next. But this will, your job today is simply to decide whether or not it is, in fact, dangerous and unsafe. It is then the property owner's decision as to how to remedy that, ranging from repair to demolition. I understand that all roads are leading towards repair, and that's his prerogative. But if you adopt this resolution today based upon a finding that it's dangerous and unsafe, he'll be given additional time so long as he's diligently pursuing that completion of the work.
In your understanding, will that come back to us before that is made, a final decision is made if it's not being pursued diligently?
I'd recommend that, that we make that point on the record today, that that's your expectation, if it is, but typically it would, yes. Typically, because the next step, if the city were to determine that it wasn't repaired, then the city can either repair or demolish it through its own forces. And that would most likely involve, you know, the award of a contract for someone to perform that work. So we can, we can make a point to have it come back here if you proceed for any further actions taken.
And that's good practice regardless.
This is Commissioner Miller. I have a little bit of information to add to that. I have been in contact with Mr. Seymour, and he has made a great effort to try to repair it. I went by and I've seen it, and then with talking to him, I, I don't feel that we should deem it dangerous. I think we should give him some leeway, given the weather and, you know, his ability to complete it, given that.
Yeah, and I, I think just the even if, even bypassing this, he still does have, you know, have that ability to do so.
Yeah, and I've heard from several of the neighbors, and they say he has been working on it because they're, they're texting me like, you know, because they want it fixed, because I guess the police have been over there occasionally in the last couple of years looking for people that have been hiding in there and stuff, so. But they said he has been working on it.
Does it still meet the definition of a dangerous structure?
Today?
Yeah.
Yes. Do we have any further questions for City Inspector Stearman? Thank you. And do we have anyone else that would like to speak before we close the public hearing? If you could just state your name when you come up to the mic.
Yeah, Roger Seymour. I'm one of the co-owners of the LLC that owns the properties in question. I'm also a licensed general contractor, have been for over thirty years. I'm a licensed roofing contractor by the state of Kansas. I'm licensed in numerous cities. One point in time, I have was licensed in over thirty cities because each city seems to think that they need to collect some dollars for tax, for, for permits and for licensing. I'm a little frustrated, to be quite honest. We had an unprecedented snow. I think you need to give weather days. You would for any general contractor, for any other project, any city project, you'd give weather days. We spend money in this community. We spend money in this county. We have for decades. My wife and I are from rural Riley County. I'm a trustee, I'm a trustee for township. Now, we had, in my township, unprecedented snow. Abilene had unprecedented snow. My personal house, I couldn't even get out of my driveway for three days. I had to orchestrate the road grader and the tractor to go with him to get our township roads cleared. Mine is the number four priority. I did not put mine on above the list. I put it where it belonged. I'm frustrated because of the snow that we had, unprecedented. Last time we had a snow like this, I was a freshman in college. January nineteen seventy-eight. That's the last storm we've had like this. Feel that we're kind of a target. Your inspector and I do not get along. He's toothfaced. He tells you what he wants to hear, what you want to hear. He told me personally. He came to the site and said, you are doing a wonderful and great job. Then he came to this meeting and said I was not. He is toothfaced. He's unreliable, and I would strongly consider that if you're going to terminate someone, leave this guy alone and get rid of that inspector. A lot of people do not like your inspector. He's not the best individual. I grew up in, over by Walmigo. People from Walmigo don't like him. People that know him strongly look at his ability. Now, I've got
If you could, please stick to what the topic at hand as well.
I am sticking to the topic. I've got the mic. I've got right here about eight properties in this town that are in worse shape or similar shape to ours. I want to know if any of those are being taken care of. I have not seen anything on your agenda. I've got eight properties here. I don't think your inspector's doing the job. If you don't know about these eight properties, I guarantee you he doesn't do in his job. I'm frustrated with him. He may be a good inspector. He may do exactly what you want done. He's my employee. I terminated him. We're diligently working on the project. Worked on it on January fourth. January fourth, we got an ice storm. I was up on a roof. Didn't realize it was ice till I got ready to get off that roof. I had to have two of my helpers come with a ladder to get me off the roof safely. We had a snowstorm. I could, I checked the snow. I've got pictures, dated pictures, showing that we couldn't even get up on that roof. To work on that roof recently, we had to actually go with a blower and a heat gun and shovels to clear it off in order to shingle the roof. We're diligently working on it. Now, I think you'd be remiss in not granting a sixty-day extension before you just kick this down the road sixty days further. Yes, John, I know you don't like to hear this. You've got your mind made up. I know how you're voting.
Okay, I think we're, we're done here, so.
We're not done.
Yes, we are. Thank you very much. Please take your seat. Please take your seat. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the commission during this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Then we will move on to seven B. Consider approval of Resolution Number zero-two-one-zero-two-five-dash-one. Resolution finding that the structure located at sixteen oh one West First Street, Abilene, Kansas, is unsafe and dangerous, and directing the structure to be repaired or removed, and the premises made safe and secure. City Inspector Stearman. You have anything you'd like to add?
I'm just looking at the county record here, and what it appears to me is that Mr. Seymour transferred, transferred this into his, I believe it's Valley Center Holdings entity on or about August eighteenth of twenty twenty-two. It looks like potentially purchased it on seven eleven twenty twenty-two. I'm not absolutely certain on these, but then his previous entity, I believe, took ownership of that property on June twenty-seventh of twenty twelve. And I don't know how many sixty days that is, but it's a whole bunch. And Mr. Stearman will have the flexibility to add five or six or sixty days to this time period as CCs fit, if we do find it to be a dangerous structure. And I think Mr. Seymour, just judging by the timeframe here, that maybe you need that kind of sense of urgency. And I appreciate what you've done so far. I'm also, I own rental properties. I know it's not all what the kids think it is. And so I certainly appreciate what you are doing. And I will tell you, I have absolutely no intention of I don't want to tear down anything in this town, frankly. And I do appreciate your diligence, and I expect Mr. Stearman to work with you to make sure that the project gets completed as needed. Snow days, whatever, whatever you want to call them, as long as you're moving forward, it's my expectation that we're going to see this to a satisfactory conclusion.
One thing I want to pick, the, the timeline is set in this resolution that, that we have, so right now it's saying that substantial completion of, of all work by March thirty-first. So I'd be amicable to extending that out to April thirtieth.
Yeah, I think, I guess, first of all, do we have any questions for staff on this while we're discussing it? And just out of fairness too, do we have any public discussion comments on it? You may. You have three minutes, and if you get off topic, you will be expected to take your seat immediately.
Okay. I would agree to Commissioner Witt's extending it out to whatever date he just said. That's reasonable amount of time unless we get another huge snowstorm or other calamity. We do have the building totally insured, so if it were to get damaged by an act of God or something else. Essentially, we've got one slope we're working on, one that's ready to shingle, one to tear off, and the others meet the standards. Now, I would like to redo those, but I'm going to meet what, meet your standard and do those down the road probably immediately after, but down the road, get the ones that, that you're deeming necessary to comply with your order. But if you could extend that out to the date that he extended or he suggested, I think that would be fair and reasonable.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address this agenda item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion prior to further commission discussion.
I move that we approve resolution number zero-two-one-zero-two-five-dash-one. A resolution finding that the structure located at sixteen oh one West First Street in Abilene, Kansas is unsafe and dangerous, determining the structure to be repaired. With the adjustment in the resolution having substantial completion by April thirtieth and the expectation that the city commission receives report when substantial completion achieves if earlier or receiving a report by that date as to the status of the project.
I'll second. Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, move to roll call vote, Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven C, consider approval of resolution number zero-two-one-zero-two-five-dash-two. Resolution amending the employee policies and guidelines of the city of Abilene, Kansas. City Clerk, HR Director Moore.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the changes to the personnel manual that we discussed at the last meeting. We did revise the social media policy on personal social media use and added section ten-point-seven, ten-dash-seven, and then renumbered the following sections, and that's the only change since last meeting.
Commissioner Kohlhoff, you brought that up, did you have a chance to look that over and make sure it? I looked it over, it covered what I thought we had discussed, but.
My Adobe just crashed here, so I apologize, I don't have it right here.
It's okay, my throat's crashing as well.
That change was emailed to you as well.
Meantime, do we have any further, or any other questions for city staff on updated employee policies and guidelines?
City Attorney Martin, can you explain the last paragraph there under, I believe it's ten-seven? Do you have that in front of you?
Yes. So at the last meeting, we discussed some changes. That last paragraph that you just asked about is not one of them, and I what we did change at the last meeting was we had two separate sets of rules, one for the official city's social media account or accounts plural, and then one for off-duty use of personal social media. Ten-point-seven addresses off-duty use of personal social media. And it's my understanding that there was a desire to have a set of rules that applied to city employees when they're not at work and using social media, but otherwise commenting on city matters. Employers can regulate that, municipal employers can regulate that, that's what this section ten-point-seven does. However, they are they do have the legal ability to speak freely under the First Amendment, so we cannot, within this policy, restrict city employees from speaking about matters of public concern. And the definition of public concern is difficult to define, it's established by case law, and I think I may have given an example at the last meeting, but it'd be substantial matters affecting the city if the city were under investigation for doing something significantly wrong or if a department head were embezzling, something of that nature, that would be a matter of public concern. What would not be a matter of public concern would be for an employee to badmouth their boss just because they're in a bad mood on social media. The city has the right to view that as reflecting poorly on the city, just like any private employer could reflect, could perceive their private employee as doing that in a way that reflects poorly on their private employer. So this policy attempts to create a set of rules that says what you can't do on your private social media. But we have this catch-all to make abundantly clear that we're not attempting to infringe on those First Amendment rights. So if, despite those rules, if it does relate to a matter of public concern or an expression of political beliefs or associations, we're not intending to prohibit that. That is somewhat of a fact-specific analysis, that is hard to answer proactively with respect to any set of facts. But I think it should give employees comfort knowing that they still do have the ability to speak freely. Whether or not a particular viewpoint or idea that they wish to express is prohibited or allowed is going to be a fact-specific inquiry.
I think the first part of it is more clear, I think the second part is where I have some questions and concerns and maybe just muddies the waters where it says unless those expressions substantially disrupt the efficient and effective delivery of public services by the city. And I don't know that that's a statement that I can stand behind.
Okay, sure, and that, you know, the whole, the whole purpose of, I think this is for you to decide, but I expect that the whole objective of regulating this subject in the first place is to ensure that the city's operations and the efficiencies of those operations or the perception of those operations are not disrupted in the eyes of the public. So I think the, that provision there is intended to say if it relates to a matter of public concern, you can still speak about it, but those matters of public concern have to be weighed against their effect on the city's operations. And that is the legal standard against which a court would apply the rule, again, based on these specific facts. But, you know, how those viewpoints would substantially disrupt the city's operations, it's hard to say. But what I attempted to do was codify the rule that would be applied to a court if someone wished to say something and were punished for doing so.
I think just to use your example, my concern with the way it's stated is that if there is a hourly employee who thinks their employer or their department head might be embezzling, that them blowing the whistle could be seen as a disruption to efficient and effective delivery of city services. That's my concern, it's just that, well, I understand we're looking at legal terms, I don't think that's probably the terms that an employee should be expected to understand their employee manual.
Your points well taken, and I, I think the unless those expressions clause, whether that's in there or not, that will be the legal standard that's applied, you know, if anyone ever asserts a First Amendment claim. So I, that could be removed if that, if you think that adds more confusion to the set of rules. And I would be okay with that.
So you're saying whether it's in there or not, it's applied?
I, I believe so, I think it would be. This was just a catch-all kind of safeguard thing there at the end, that we're not trying to infringe on those protected rights you have. But it, it does bring in a, a legal rule that is really difficult to flesh out in layman's terms in the abstract, you know, without application to a specific set of facts, so we could just cut it off right when it starts at unless, if, if we think that that causes more confusion than is helpful.
In your, I guess in your, oh, sorry, I guess in your opinion, if we did remove that, because I think it's, I think the standard's going to be set regardless. If it were removed, would that open us up to any additional legal risk?
No, I think it's actually more favorable to speech and more allowing of speech by removing it. Because as it's written, it qualifies the ability to speak on public concerns. And if we remove it, it's just saying, we acknowledge you have those rights and you may do it. Then if somebody does that and we have a problem with it, we can do the legal analysis at that time. So I, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I, I see your point, I would be fine with removing it. I think we're in just as good of legal situation without it.
And it would be handed on a case-by-case basis regardless, so.
Yes. The phrase "public concern" is going to be established by case law.
Okay. Do we have any other questions on, on that item for staff? I'm, yeah, I'm fine with it removed, that doesn't bother me, like, so it's going to be applied on a case-by-case basis regardless, so. I would look to, or I guess I would ask that whoever makes the motion to rely on city attorney's adjustment to the motion, that way it catches what we just discussed. There are no other questions for staff, I would entertain a motion.
I move to consider approval of resolution number zero-two-one-zero-two-five-dash-two. A resolution amending the employee policies and guidelines of the city of Abilene, Kansas with the adjustment of what the city attorney recommended.
And just for the record, that'll be the removal of the last clause of section ten-dash-seven-four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, move to roll call vote, Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven D, consider approval of a bid from Mid-America Courtworks for the resurfacing of the Eisenhower Park basketball courts and replacement of the basketball goal, backboards and rims in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Parks and Rec Director Tim Brook. Refrain from making a comment.
This is the topic of the basketball courts that we had talked about last time, the question then was the basketball goals. So since then, we got information that our posts are in good shape, so we can just replace the backboards and rims. And that took the cost down even more on those, so. I did reach out to the other vendor to ask him about the same thing, and they, our backboards have three different attachments to them. So their companies could only find two, so I'd still like to move ahead with Mid-America Sports on the resurfacing and the backboards.
What is the, sorry, what is the updated cost? Is that reflected in there?
What is the what? For the basketball?
With the removal?
Eleven thousand.
That's reflected in the, okay, I'll make sure.
That should be the new shoot puts in there.
Yeah. Do we have any questions for Kelly on this?
Are there two basketball courts?
There's two courts and then like two small ones on the north, there's six goals altogether.
The north, oh, they're right beside, the same area, okay, okay, oh, I'm with you, yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Kelly.
I move to approve the bid from Mid-America Courtworks for resurfacing of the Eisenhower Park basketball courts and replacement of the basketball goal, backboards and rims in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any further commission discussion?
What is the Finance Director Johnson, what is our balance in the special projects fund?
Each fund has its own, this one is specific to the recreation, and I'd have to look that up.
We always budget a hundred and sixty-five thousand in there, and then we added in for this improvement, I think we added an extra hundred and fifty for this budget year for some of these different projects.
Any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item is seven E, approval of ordinance number two-five-dash-three-four-five-seven and ordinance levying a three-and-one-half-tenths of one percent, zero-point-three-five percent special-purpose retailer sales tax within the city of Abilene, Kansas for the purpose of funding recreation facility improvements to include multipurpose fields, Finance Director Johnson.
Thank you. On October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, the city adopted resolution number ten-two-eight-two-four-dash-two that submitted to the electors of the city the question of whether a special-purpose retailer's sales tax in the amount of three-and-one-half-tenths of one percent to be levied in the city of Abilene, Kansas with revenue from those sales tax to fund recreation facilities improvements to include the multipurpose fields. The question of this sales tax was submitted to the electors of the city at the special question election on February fourth, twenty twenty-five, and at the election, a majority of the electors of the city voted in favor of the sales tax. I recommend approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-three-four-five-seven levying a three-and-one-half-tenths of one percent special-purpose retailer sales tax within the city of Abilene, Kansas for the purpose of funding recreation facility improvements to include multipurpose fields.
Thank you, do we have any questions for city staff on this item? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Do you want any public comment?
Oh, yes, if anyone would like to, do we have any public comment, sorry? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number two-five-dash-three-four-five-seven and ordinance levying a three-and-one-half-tenths of one percent special-purpose retailer sales tax within the city of Abilene, Kansas for the purpose of funding recreation, recreation facility improvements to include multipurpose fields.
I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded, do we have any further commission discussion?
Just a general update to the commission, since I serve on the Task Force Committee, we're meeting again tomorrow. And so that task force is going from trying to pitch the sales tax, and now that the sales tax is passed, now it's the refinement of the scope of the project and, and working through that. So the expectation is the task force should have recommendations to the governing body here within the next month or so.
Thank you. Have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion, oh, sorry. Seeing none, move to roll call vote, Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Next item is under items for discussion, eight A, consider approving a bid from Athco Acquisition Corp. for the purchase and installation of a shade structure for the Abilene swimming pool with a total city responsibility of twenty-two thousand seven thirty-three thirty-five, Parks and Recreation Director Tim Brook.
Let's run that one. So as you know, I got a late bid in for it that came in a lot less than the other one that we had got. So I hope you all got a chance to look at that. It's the same shade structure, the only thing I can maybe think is installation prices and the engineering prices on it. I'm good with either company, again, we get the five thousand dollar grant that goes towards that, so if we go with the new one, that puts us down to fourteen thousand. So if you have questions, I'm asking for this to be on discussion today and maybe get approval just because of lead time and hoping to get this installed for opening day, so.
So I'm looking, this is a sixteen-by-sixteen-foot square cantilevered shade, that's an eight-foot height, basically, to the base, yeah. Can you maybe explain the need for that and where that's going to be installed?
So we're going to put it on the north end of the pool, there's that open deck area right north of the slide. And we have got more tables and chairs last year, we tried to just do big umbrellas, they just don't handle the wind. And in the Parkmaster plan, it was mentioned we need more shading at the pool, and then also off of and then also off of the community survey and just from hearing from the public that we need some more shade at the pool. So we're planning to put it in that north end. We do have room that down the road, we could add another one if we need to. But that's kind of our starting point to get some shade going, so they have more space to sit under.
I'm looking at the install cost here. Who's actually doing the installation?
They will do that. Game Time will do that. Each company will do their own install.
Is there any reason why city staff couldn't install that?
I think mostly because of the engineering and the footings and everything with it.
Well, I think we're paying for engineered drawings. I mean, so I don't think there should be.
The only thing that we're doing on the back end is repairing the deck, and McKees will actually do that for us once it's all installed.
I just wonder if we couldn't have, for the same money and with the staff that we already have on salary installing it, if we could have two shade structures.
I know Cory, as far as the park, would feel more comfortable with them doing it, but.
I don't think that, I don't know if it'd be parks. I was thinking Public Works or somebody might be more appropriate for that. Is that, if we were to approve, let's say, the full amount, what? Do you think you'd need more than one shade structure?
I think eventually it would be nice too, but again, it'll kind of see how we get it set up. And I would like to add one in the baby pool initially.
Yeah. I would just like to see if we could be more efficient with that. With those funds. I mean, I think you're talking about, I don't know, a few, maybe a couple thousand dollars max worth of concrete and steel for that reinforced concrete.
Yeah, and I do recognize it's a pretty good chunk. I just don't know the specifics on what type of installation it will entail.
Yeah, I want to say the ones that the ball fields are six feet down, the footings are. I mean, it's not just digging a hole and pouring some concrete in and doing it, but just what the sides. The warranty, yeah, both of them have a 10-year warranty on the fabric and thread. Athco has a 20-year warranty on all the steel components, and Game Time has a life warranty on theirs.
Is there steel or is it aluminum or something different? If, I guess, I'm open to approving it as it's written, but I would be curious if we couldn't do two of them at the same time or something like that with local labor. Is that something you would be willing to look into if we did approve the full amount?
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
Yeah, there's plenty of lead time too, and can at least look at it.
When's opening day?
May 26th. This one has a little quicker lead time than the other one, but still thinking six to 10 is what they say weeks, so.
It's pretty tight still.
I've seen this, these are even similar to Wamigos. That Wamigo pool has a lot of structures, and I think they're very similar. I've seen them, but I don't know how they're mounted. My concern is the footing around the edge of the pool, how thick the concrete is, and then what's underneath that. I'm assuming standard base work, so I don't, structural-wise, I don't know what it would take. I'd have to look at the plans. I have not looked at any of this, so knowing that we could or couldn't do it, I can't say that right now. I think maybe one of the questions that was, she may be able to find out, is when you're talking about the warranty, does the warranty include the installation by their company? And I would guess, a lot of things operate that way. They might void a warranty if you have someone other than their company put them in. I don't know that. It's just something she'll have to look into, so.
Yeah, it's a good thing to keep in mind, though.
Yeah, I'd just be curious to know. I think a lot of, it wouldn't surprise me if they send one person to oversee the job, and then they're just using local labor for everything else.
I can find out.
Okay.
We can look at that and then see what all it entails and.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions on this item?
I make a motion to approve this bid from Game Time in the amount of $19,460.37 with the expectation of the Community Foundation Grant covering $5,000 of that for the shade structure at the Abilene Swimming Pool.
I'll second it.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is 8B, an executive session. Aaron, do you have any recommendation on time? City Manager Marsh?
I'm gonna err on the side of caution and say 15 minutes.
I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss legal counsel, discuss with legal counsel certain legal rights issues, rights and/or obligations arising under the Firefighters Relief Act based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KFA 75-7319B2. Open public meeting will resume in this room at 5:03 PM.
I'll second.
There's something moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohlhoff?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are in executive session.
I can give you a call, Wendy.
Thank you.
We'll now resume our regular meeting. No action was taken in executive session. Next item is nine A city managers report, city manager Marsh.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The water treatment plant roof replacement had the final warranty inspection last Monday and everything was good. We should be getting the warranty documentation in the next couple of weeks. The Spruce Way Waterline project is underway and moving along. And also applications for the 2027, 2028 CCLIP program are due at the end of March. Possible projects are surface preservation on Buckeye from Northwest Fifth Street to Northwest Seventh to continue the process we've already, the progress we've already made. And also a geometric improvement of the intersection of Seventh and Buckeye, which needs to be done at some point in the future. And finally, the end of the year reports for your departments and boards, which normally would have been included in your packets, will be emailed out tomorrow morning. So you'll get those tomorrow morning.
Next item is 10A, consider a motion to recess.
Do we want a break? Bathroom break?
Yeah, sure.
Go right into it?
Five ten, be okay, four minutes.
Sounds good. I move the city commission recess and then resume for the study session at five ten.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second. Do we have any further commission discussion? Taking that on my roll call vote, Vice Mayor Miller.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Whit.
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are in recess. Well, now a call to order, the February tenth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas, City Commission Study Session. Our first item on the agenda is two A, funding for Department of Commerce grant, the city share, city manager Marsh, Dominic Eck with Gilmore and Bell.
Commissioners, at the last meeting, we discussed some options for funding for the industrial park grant we received from the Department of Commerce, at least our share of it. And you had asked some questions of one of the commissioners had from Dominic Eck, our bond counsel at Gilmore and Bell, and he is here to talk about that.
Good evening. As city manager Marsh said, this is Dominic with Gilmore and Bell. Following up on the homework from last session, we took a look again, tried to, tried to review, you know, relevant attorney general opinions and other information regarding TIF districts and whether we thought that we could come to the conclusion that the greenfield development site at the industrial park could qualify as an eligible area for TIF purposes. It's our conclusion that we cannot get there in, in the fact scenario presented. Just with the fact that it's, it's greenfield, it's, it's not a redevelopment site. Pursuant to meeting the majority of the five blighted factors and absent any other structures or floodplain or anything of that nature. You know, it's our position that, that we don't, we don't think it could qualify for this purpose. So I'll discuss any, any questions you may have on that, or if you want to talk about any of the other potential funding mechanisms, happy to discuss that as well.
Any questions first for Dominic on TIF?
Can you present to the commission all the data that you relied upon for that? Not necessarily here, but if you could email that to us.
So you want a list of like relevant attorney general opinions, et cetera, on that?
Yes, please.
We can point you in the direction of attorney general opinions that, that address the TIF act, yes. I mean, so it's a little bit of, you know, proving a negative to some extent, right? So, so there's not any evidence to indicate that a greenfield development site would qualify as an unsafe or unsanitary condition that would be one of the blight factors. That, that is one of the things, if you wanted to, you know, request a formal attorney general opinion on the direct issue, you'd certainly be within your rights to do so. The attorney general opinions have persuasive authority and have been relied upon in this, in this arena multiple times, but you know, you, I'm, I'm not going to have an opinion for you that says that it does or doesn't. It's kind of unaddressed. And so we just kind of go look at the plain reading of the statute, the redevelopment language in the act. A, the fact that, that TIF was initially created to promote redevelopment, not initial development are some of the factors that, that we utilize to come to our conclusion. Happy to send you though lists of attorney general opinions that do address the TIF act, if you want to cruise through them and, and see what items have been addressed.
One of the other things we discussed was including a potentially larger area. Did you, did you pursue that to see what other areas we could, we could potentially contiguous to that, or I'm not sure if there's a requirement that it be contiguous, to be honest. But other areas that would basically allow us to create that TIF district?
So.
Circumstances.
Yeah, we're happy to look if you've got a proposal of a different, different area that would include additional buildings or things of that nature to, to help meet the requirements. I'm not aware of any, you know, proposed area that would be included with this to, to try to meet those standards. But if you have some additional parcels you'd like to send our way to look at, we'd be happy to look at.
Do you have any more TIF specific questions first? Dominic, if you'd like, you can proceed to the remainder.
That's, that's the new update that I had. The, the remainder would just be kind of the, the rehash of the other options, which would be potentially trying to set up a benefit district for the area that would help to spread some of the costs on ultimate property owners within the district or utilizing the city's capital improvement CIP plan to perform the project on a citywide basis.
Does anyone on the commission have questions for Dominic regarding those options one and two?
Yeah, no, no questions for me. My position right now, as I think of this, is I lean towards option two of just looking at this and from talking to other community leaders of wanting to make these sites as attractive as possible. I think that, that option two is what, what gets us there and gives us the most flexibility for potential incentives for whatever businesses we were able to recruit.
I knew we looked at some additional, or some other information on other industrial parks with a sales price per acre of land and, and based on that, we how we work it, it, it may actually cover that $750,000 with the improvements.
It could get us close.
Yeah, could be close.
And just in general with things like this. Simple, I like, I prefer simple solutions. As they're easier to understand from both a governing body standpoint and from a communicating that tool, a potential business, I, I prefer something that's simple. Or simple relative to other things.
Do you have any other questions, comments for Dominic on these options that were presented?
Dominic, is there a catalog of TIF projects throughout the state that we could reference?
I'm not aware of any, any kind of compilation of all TIF projects that, that would, that would be comprehensive there.
Dominic, cover those projects tracked.
It's really just at the city by city level. Each city has their, you know, there's no, you know, kind of Department of Commerce approval or process or anything that goes with, with the TIF program. It's, it's done at the local level by cities and, and then the only other governing bodies would be counties and school districts would have veto opportunities. So to the extent that they exercise that, they would have some proceedings, but otherwise for your, your kind of standard TIF project, it's a city by city process.
I've done just kind of a cursory overview, I guess, of a couple of attorney generals' opinions. I think the attorney general is very clear, you can't build golf courses with it. But they do mention development and redevelopment. They mention a bunch of different reasons, so social, economic and other factors that can relate to the blight of a property. And I guess if it's your opinion, I guess, that it wouldn't qualify, it would be my opinion that it would. And I think it's really up to the, from what I can tell, as you just stated, it's up to the city to determine what blight it is. And if we say it's blighted, it's blighted. blighted, it's blighted. And I guess the, the county and the school board can disagree and put a kibosh on the project. But if I'm understanding that incorrectly, I'd like to know.
So you're asking is, are there other, any other avenues by which your finding could be challenged? The, the main one would be, you know, if you took it through a financing and submitted your transcript to the attorney general's office, right? And then they could ultimately reject your financing. There, there could be others that may or may not be better addressed in a executive session than, than open session as, as, you know, legal counsel to the governing body. But yeah, I, I think I'd prefer to, to, to leave it there in this environment.
I'd be happy to go to an executive session if we could, if that would help us better understand what our options are.
I guess Dominic, is that something, I don't know that we've got the, it's set up for zooming in, in the executive session room, but is that something you could also email out to us?
Yes, I think I'd probably, I'd get with a city, city attorney Martin to discuss if, if that'd be appropriate through an email communication there and, and work through that process with him.
Jared, are you amenable to that?
Yes, I would be happy to work with Mr. Eck and generally as one of the attorneys for the city and the governing body, it is appropriate to share attorney privileged information in that manner, but I can work with him to make sure we do that correctly.
Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners Miller and Meisenberg, wanting to know what, what you two are thinking in terms of funding the city's portion of this project?
I like what you said. I like simple. But I also think I would like to see what they come up with because I feel like I don't know enough about it. I want to learn more. So
I'm in agreeance. I think option two is my preference pending what other outcome we can come up with.
I guess I will just, yeah, just reiterate the direction, Dominic, if you could just work with city attorney Martin to kind of come up with the best way to transmit that information that you discussed to us without calling in, I guess, an impromptu executive session right now. That way, if we do need to do that at the next meeting, we can try to get the audio visual equipment in there set up. That way you can join us via Zoom in there as well.
Will do.
Have any other questions on that item? Seeing that will move to two B disadvantaged business enterprise DBE program for the airport. Finance Director Johnson.
Thanks, Dominic.
Disadvantaged business enterprise programs are required by FAA funded projects or for FAA funded projects. The regulations had changed, which means we needed an updated program for this teehanger project that we're going to be working on. And as far as I know, we don't have a program in place. So the program that was given to us that was updated by Diane and Olson was actually something that's new to us as a city. So they drafted an updated DBE program to comply with the new regulations, which did go through city attorney Martin. We were required to post this public notice on our website for thirty days. We did not receive any comments. Now it needs to be voted on and approved by city commission so that we can put that into place and have a signed document submitted to the FAA for the funding of the future project.
Are there any other, I guess, unforeseen or unknown circumstances surrounding that that could be a cause for concern that you know of?
Not that I know of.
Just seems like a classic case of the FAA loving their paperwork.
Exactly. Protocols.
Okay, do we have any further questions on that items? Hearing none, we'll move to item two C, Airport Hangar Work Order with Olson, Finance Director Johnson, Brian Coombs with Olson.
That's right. So we do have Brian here who works with Diane, who's been working with me on this teehanger project. So we have the master agreement with the professional services, which we are now submitting work order number eight, which is for the design and bidding of this construction, the design and bidding piece of the construction of the minimum four plane teehanger. The design phase would be a hundred and nine thousand three hundred dollars. The bidding phase would be twelve thousand eight hundred. Anticipated start date of March first, ninety percent of the plans and specifications will be submitted by September first. I have the work order attached as well as the ongoing submission of the previous work orders for your review. And we have Brian here with any questions regarding the specifics.
Brian, is there anything you would like to address in the ad or?
No, I'd just like to introduce myself, Brian Coombs with Olson Engineer on our airport team. So happy to be here tonight and, and meet you all since I haven't had the chance to do that in the past. And, um, no, just here to answer any specific questions that you may have.
It says minimum four plane. So, and this initial look at this, we think we can at least fit four planes in there, but potential for more?
Actually, yes. I think we've done a preliminary layout to establish a project budget that shows a six place fitting comfortably. And once we kick off, we would intend to analyze even up to an eight. It might be a little tighter or require some different code requirements if we try to do that. Plus it would be more expensive than what we're showing in the budget. But I, I'm pretty confident with the budget that we're showing that a six would be feasible. So right now, kind of operating closer to a six than a four.
Great. Yeah, just thinking in context, I've been on the commission since the old hangars got, were blown away and there was a lot more spaces for there. And I know tied to FAA funding, there's also parking. They want to see so many airplanes parked. And so, yeah, I wanted to maximize how many planes were able to, but also want it to be still usable. So.
Right, absolutely. And the, in the, one of the key factors is maintaining ten based aircraft registered at your facility, which keeps you eligible for receiving that, those federal funds each year.
Right, yep.
How are those spaces allocated within the pilot base locally? If we're, if we're building for four, eight or ten, how are those spaces spoken for, rented, whatever?
It's a first come, first served. We don't have any right now. We, we don't have any hanger rentals right now because we don't have any hangars. It would be a first come, first serve. Now, we do have some that are based here because of the hangars that they have for ground leases. So that's how we have our current base of, 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 of air, aircraft. Can't talk.
So were there private aircraft in the city's hangars when they blew away?
Yes.
How many aircraft or registered aircraft were there at the time?
At the time, I think it was in the, the lower twenties, if I remember correctly, like twenty one. I'd have to look back specifically, but I know that we were, we were up there when we lost it. And now we're down to, I think we have twelve is what our last one was. We are, maybe we were at the minimum of ten, I'm not sure.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about both private and public aircraft that were stored in both private and public facilities?
Yeah, we only had the one public. We had the ten space public hanger.
Okay.
And then the rest are all private. They are just ground leases that they have built those structures.
Are some of those ten aircraft now on private structures? Is that a fair assumption to make?
I, I don't know specifically. I, yeah, I don't think we have any. A couple, actually several of them were destroyed. So I
Well, are you asking of the ten based aircraft that you currently list, where are they stored?
Uh, no, just the, the aircraft that were previously in public hangars, I guess. And I don't, I'm kind of looking at Trevor here since I assume you know most of these folks. Is there, does a city have in mind a process for people to gain access to these hangars once they're built that we would deem equitable? I mean, will it be based off of seniority at a, in the previous facilities or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a question for, I think, the airport board. That's a, that's a good thing to pitch to them because they're in tune with that community and what, what would make the most sense. I don't have any more questions related to this. Anyone else have any questions for Brian?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And our next item is two D, Storm Siren Bids, Assistant Chief Stuck.
Good afternoon. This fire department is looking at replacing our storm sirens, upgrading our program. City of Abilene has nine storm sirens. The oldest one that we can find records of dates back to nineteen sixty seven. That is the one at KDOT as well as the one at Kennedy School. So we are looking to purchase one to replace the one at KDOT. We sent out bids, or I'm sorry, we received back three bids, lowest bid came in from Blue Valley, and that's the one that we are going to be recommending next week. We budgeted thirty one thousand five hundred. They came in thirty one thousand two fifty nine and sixty five cents. It came in right under our budget. The other two were quite a bit over. Blue Valley is installed. Most of our storm sirens in town, they are the ones that are responsible for maintaining all of them currently. That is going to be the party we recommend going with.
And a quick question on that. So it's located at KDOT?
Correct.
But it's our property. So.
Yes, it is our storm siren that was put in on KDOT's property.
You just have some sort of agreement with them that allows us to place it there?
That was long before me.
Yeah.
For nineteen sixty seven.
Yeah, I was just begging the question. It was like.
But I did go up to KDOT last week to visit with the onsite supervisor, just to go over the project with him, make sure they didn't have any concerns, that they were okay with us replacing it, and they were one hundred percent fine with it. I spoke with Evergy as far as cost levels and removing the electrical and replacing it. They were actually excited we're doing it because that's a three phase siren. We're going to downgrade to a single phase. So they get to put a new transformer in. That's a lot safer for their personnel to work in and around. So it's kind of a win win all the way around for all of us. And there's no charge to the city for any of that Evergy work.
Thinking beyond this, you say there's nine. What, what's kind of the general thought going forward in the future of replacing these?
We have, and the fire department's tenure CIP, it's spelled out to replace all of them. The newest siren was put in in two thousand and nine, and that is in Golden Belt Heights. One thing I did put in my notes that's on yours is this would be a battery backup, the current, we only have four that are battery backup. This would give us a fifth one. So most of the city is covered by battery backup, even a power loss. So that's kind of nice. That's an area of town that was underserved. So this will take care of that problem. Next one will be Kennedy that we'll try to replace next year. We're going to budget for next year if you approve in their, for twenty twenty six budget, and we'll just keep going down our list.
Great.
Very good.
We have any additional questions on that item?
I think the timing is good after you're talking about the airport being destroyed by the storms and.
What's the lead time on this after approval?
It takes four to six weeks to get it in and then get it scheduled for install. We're looking roughly May to June. We're going to miss spring storm season, however, we'll catch summer.
Okay, great. And the other, the existing one will stay active until it's replaced?
Yes.
Yeah, assumed so, but.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our next item is two E, Northeast Drainage Discussion. That's being continued. Look to Public Works Director Anderson and Jared with Olson.
Commissioners, Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. Yes, this is just a continuation of the Northeast Fifteenth Street study. So I won't read the whole thing. You guys were sent the packet. I think the biggest thing I'm going to have is have Jared Loomis from Olson come up. The one, really the highlight in here that I want to just point out, and he'll go into them, is you guys were kind of asking for some more recommendations on what could be done. And, and basically we've came up with three different options now. So most of the detail work he has lined out, so I'm going to bring him on up and, and let him talk about that.
Yeah, Jared Loomis with Olson. And I think last time we were speaking on this topic, we had talked about two options, one being a underground storm sewer option that connected up to the existing storm sewer at Brady and Charles Road. And then the other option being one detention basin near Northeast Fifteenth Street. Based on those conversations, we, I was directed, based on city commission comments, to look at an additional potential detention basin, kind of southwest of Jayhawk Street. There was a green space area that was identified. And then also looking at seeing if we could capture some of the drainage south of Jayhawk and take it to that originally planned detention basin. So I've provided some additional exhibits, updated the originals, because as we got into the analysis, to look at a separate detention basin in the, what is now labeled as the D three drainage area on the updated exhibit one, we needed to split out the existing, what was previously F one drainage area. So there were some updates there, but to, to analyze a detention basin in the correct way, I had to separate out some of the drainage areas. So just clarifying that. But the first three exhibits were similar to what had been provided previously. And then exhibit four, which is what I'm calling a proposed option three, is the two detention basin system. So that looks at a, an additional detention basin southwest of Jayhawk Street in the backyard of those private residences. And, and using the LiDAR elevation information, we can grade in another detention basin, which would offset some of the water that flows north towards Jayhawk. I think there was a comment that Brad made about that some residents had complained about how much water goes there or previous complaints potentially. So we did look at that. Should point out that the detention basin, so what I'm calling detention, second detention basin, it cannot contain the one hundred year storm within the basin, but it would still divert the flow to where it's going now. So city criteria are actually, you do not have to detain the one hundred year storm within the basin. So it would meet the intent of the current City of Abilene drainage criteria, and it would not be shifting, you know, any additional water or putting any additional water to a place it's not already going. It would still serve some benefit, just not the full one hundred year benefit that the other pond was able to do based on the size. Another option that I was asked to look at, which is the last exhibit, would be what I just labeled shifting drainage option. That was, I was asked to look at if we captured some drainage and then shifted it to the original detention basin, if that could be a, a potential alternative. In the analysis, it was determined that that first detention basin is too small. It can't handle the one hundred year storm. And the difference between this and what I just previously discussed is this would be shifting drainage area that's not currently going to this pond, putting it in there and then making that pond, it would be undersized. So there would be some water going to a different drainage basin towards different residences that doesn't go there now. So I, I would not, well, yeah, that was, would not be what you'd want to do. And then it also, there is cover issues. You can see on the right side, to drain it, you would, the, the pipe actually comes out of the ground. So you'd be looking at having to put a ditch or a drainage swale through the trailer park drive aisle. And so obviously that would cut off access to the north, however many trailers. So it would also make that not a viable option. So we have provided updated costs for all three. So again, just to, to clarify, option one would be underground storm sewer with no detention. Option two would just be the one detention basin in the same original location. I did update Um, I did update some costs as it, based on direction, it kind of seemed like that's where we were heading. So I, I looked through even more of, um, potential cost options just to try to capture everything we could. So that has been updated. And then option three, which is the two detention basin option. Um, so I would assume we're putting in both. You know, probably around the same time, just assuming one mobilization, clearing and grubbing, kind of the same contractor doing both projects for the, for the sake of the project budget. I'd stand for any questions. I know that was a lot.
That was a lot. I'm not sure that I made it into our packet. I'm only seeing two options here, and I'm not sure if.
It was, it was on the online. Yeah, I looked at it today again.
Was it not in? There's a lot of different drawings here.
Yeah.
There are. Yeah. I, if you want to, I guess I can provide this, uh, my copy that I have here.
And just for clarity, you would not recommend option three.
Um, that's not even listed.
So option three, it could be an option. What I would not recommend is, I didn't list it as, but the shifting the drainage from going to, the drainage going to the second basin. It was asked, could we just shift that to the original one and just do one? Um, that is what I would not recommend is that pond.
Yep.
Too small, and then you'd be shifting drainage towards other homes. That water's not going there now.
Sure. Clear storm water.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
What is the, you said it wouldn't meet the hundred year storm threshold. What is the standard that it does meet, I guess?
Uh, the twenty five. So it would be, it would hold the twenty five year storm, um, without going over the spillway. But then the one hundred year, it doesn't have the volume capacity to contain the one hundred year within the.
But it would still help.
Yes. Yep. And, and again, you know, what's going, what's flowing right now in a one hundred year storm, there would be no increase to that. And it would, um, I guess it would slow it down because how it would work is it all flow into the pond, then pond up slower, and then eventually, and and what we'd have to do anyway is grade in an overflow channel and swale to divert it to make sure that it's conveying, you know, not towards any structure. Um, but without getting into the detailed design, I can't speak to how much improvement or, you know, verifying that.
Kind of on that point, where, where can you direct that safely?
Um, so, so it goes to the, towards North Wildcat Street along the property line right now. Um, so it would just be, I mean, yeah, it wouldn't be shifting anything that's going to a current location, but potentially grading in a more engineered swale to convey water more efficiently.
Can you show me the drawing they have and make sure I'm looking at the right thing here? I did find an exhibit three here. Are we looking at the same thing?
So this would be the option three exhibit four. So yeah, I'll get to these whenever you add options, my exhibit number and.
That got appended to the end here.
This would be the, the second basin. And then with the storm water pipe exiting the basin draining towards Wildcat Street, like that's where it drains now, this area here. And it goes along a ditch along that.
That was the, the general thought process behind that option three was, um, basically, I wouldn't say exactly doing what option one does because it doesn't, but it helps reduce the flow in that other area as well, but at about half the cost.
Yeah. Yeah. Similar idea, um, is that, you know, at some point development happened and, um, nothing was required. Well, this would. So what I did with the analysis was assumed that, um, no development was occurring in that drainage area. What was the flow rate? And then I looked at now the developments here like it is now. What can you match that pre-existing flow rate in two, ten, twenty five, one hundred year storm? Um, in the two, ten, twenty five, you could, the one hundred year, the pond's too small. You, you couldn't match the pre-existing, but it would still, I mean, it wouldn't add any additional or, um, you know, create more water going towards the location that's not currently going.
Mr. Marsh, just for your records, I'm, I just pulled up the packet today, and I'm not seeing these documents that he's given us here in that packet with the additional detention pond. I guess I'm, I'm not.
I believe most of them were given to you prior to there.
Yeah, I pulled up both of them here, and I, I mean, I've got it in both packets, but I don't have, there's three or four. Yeah, that are not in the packet. Um, you, I, I asked a question. I'm not sure I was clear. So I was looking at, again, I was looking at the, I think the documents that you provided for us at the last meeting.
Mm hmm.
And you, if I understood you, if we did do a detention pond, there would be like a lip overflow basically to prevent the ed from blowing out or whatever.
Yep.
What, yeah, where, and you said you'd have to create some sort of swale or something to contain that water. But I'm, I'm just want to make sure I'm clear as to where that water is actually going because that detention pond is kind of surrounded by structures here. And I'm talking about the initial one, not the second one.
The, so the initial, yeah, sorry, I was talking about the second one.
Okay.
The initial one, um, there would not, as of, I guess, where it currently sits, there would not be a planned swale.
Okay.
Um, to go away because in that one, the one hundred year can be contained. So you just have the emergency spillway for anything more than that. Um, you don't engineer anything for that. Just it's not, it's just not typical, anything above the one hundred year. You just assume that if there's damage or something that occurs as far as drainage, you know, rip rap erosion, um, you would come in and put that in, in that scenario. Yeah, sorry, the second one would be because we would have to put in the pipe. And so in doing so, um, you would probably put in something at least just to verify that it's flowing in a efficient manner.
Yeah, looking at this diagram here, that makes, that makes a lot more sense with what you.
Yeah, first one would not have a swell because it has the hundred year within.
That option three that was, was around five hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes. Yep. Hmm. And that, and I'm glad you brought that up. Another thing to clarify, uh, property acquisition would obviously be, be a very big, um, item for both options. You know, I guess twice as much for option three, maybe even more based on kind of looking at the properties and, um, well, yeah, the one basin is planned where there's nothing right now, no current structure or anything. Um, the other ones would be in backyards essentially. I mean, just being frank, looking at locations. So, um, there's an element of property acquisition that has been unknown to me, the designer. And so my property acquisition costs of seventy five thousand for option two and a hundred and fifty thousand for option three. Or, um, I would say best guesses rather than, uh, you know, engineered estimates probably.
Um, what, I guess, if you could break it down, I'm really putting you on the spot here, but, um, if you could break it down to, I guess, some sort of, uh, you know, percentage or something along those lines. Um, if we went forward with option three, I guess, what percentage in your opinion would that get us closest to option, or I guess get us to the, um, coverage we would get with option one?
So that, that's a tough question.
Technical engineer hat off.
Well, yeah, and it is, it's a little different because you're both would be, uh, well, I guess let's back up. So the goal of the northeast fifteenth study, you know, was set out to, there's some drainage issues in, uh, in that, at that residence location. And the ways to solve that are to put an inlet in that backyard and then route it around the house and then to the north to where it drains to now. From there, I think it's a question of storm sewer provides you options to collect water throughout that whole thirty two acre drainage basin. Um, you know, with the idea that if there's, uh, ponding at intersections, if there's a lot of water being carried in the street that you'd want to avoid, you know, that's where it started from. The detention basin options would be much more localized as far as those Jayhawk and Wildcat Streets with the water flowing down there. It would be, I guess, primarily focused on that additional goal in addition to the northeast, the, the residence, you know, fixing that issue. So they, they kind of solve maybe not two separate issues, but they don't perfectly overlap.
Right. I guess the way I viewed it was option three was kind of a, a middle ground between one and two. It does.
I think it does provide more, well, yeah, I guess option three takes more overall water off the street compared to one, I mean, compared to one it does, but, um, it does detain water. So you'd have lower flowing or lower flooding in the ten, two, ten, one hundred, two, ten, twenty five year storms.
And do you know off the top of your head, what's in that storm water drainage fund?
I know it's between four and five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah, last I looked, we were floating around half a million.
Yeah, I thought it was close to that, but it wasn't. Sorry to put you on the spot. I figured you might have a rough estimate at least.
If you were making the decision, what would you go with?
Um, I think, uh, paying for your buck, you, it would be one of the two detention basin options. If there is not known flooding issues at all these intersections and, and you know, the idea that we'd want to extend storms who are up those streets to collect. I think the detention basin is the better, well, I don't even know how to, how to, that's, that's what I would think. Um, just the less cost option, and it still provides, um, some storm water relief in certain drainage areas.
I'm kind of trying to like quantify the difference between a twenty five and a hundred year flood. I mean, with a hundred year flood, are we all screwed anyway?
Um, yeah, I mean.
Downtown definitely is.
I mean, essentially that is why, you know, communities don't design for a one hundred. It's just not cost effective to ever convey the one hundred year in public streets. Um, you just would assume that your street, if you have one, and technically, you know, terminology wise, so it's called one hundred year. If you have one last year, you can have one again this year. It's actually should be called percent. It's the one percent chance storm. Most people just understand it based on a year. But so the, the twenty five year is the four percent chance storm. So at any storm that hits four percent chance, it's going to be that much rain coming. Um, so yeah, it's, I think, just generally accepted. If you get the one percent chance storm, people are not going to be driving out in the street for those thirty minutes that the street's flooded and, and then you wait for that to subside.
I don't know if you were alive in nineteen ninety three, but that's probably more of like a five hundred year flood, wasn't it?
Yes. So I think between one hundred, well, maybe even more and depending on where you were. But yeah, that was, um, yeah, that was towards that level.
And yeah, that's a good point though, because we always get stuck in those hundred year, twenty five year floods and.
Yeah, well, in the hundred year, because a lot of flood insurance, um, things are based on it. So that's why it's a very common.
Yep.
Um, method or common, you know, breakpoint for what to use for designing.
When you're talking twenty five year, what does that mean in like real waterfall, rainfall and like inches per hour for period of time, that type of thing?
Um, I would have to look it up. I, I don't have, there's a lot of values, uh, rainfall intensities, but I do not have those all off the top, but I could certainly, uh, give you and even give you a depth. I could, I could track something down and provide a depth for what you would be expected to see in twenty minutes' time or something like that.
Well, I'm just curious, I guess, relative to what has to happen for there to be an issue with the current conditions. Do you have a good understanding of that? Like, is it one inch of rain in one hour causes flooding right now? Or have you been able to quantify that?
Um, no, we haven't taken as far as like downstream or the issues where, where there's flooding issues. We have not quantified exactly, you know, how deep it's flowing at a certain, at a certain flow or a certain storm. We have not done that.
Yeah, just anecdotally, when the Hookmans, uh, were showing up, um, to talk about these issues, I think the recent storms that prompted that were like having a couple inches over an hour or something like that. So significant, but not.
Right. And, and a lot of times, or I think, you know, really that issue could be from, you know, previous development going in with nothing being required. Um, you know, a lot of times you, if you just put an underground storm sewer, you can convey a substantial amount of rain. But then it's just it having not gone in and now all the water flows there. It's always flowed there. It ponds there. Um, you know, that can be even just picked up without any detention, you know, just with a, I don't know what the size I have, fifteen to eighteen inch pipe. Um, that can convey a lot of water for a local drainage area like that.
I think in the issue that affected those homeowners specifically, there was also, I don't even know that it rained that much, but it would rain a half an inch a day or something like that. So then the ground would get saturated.
Yep.
I think everything was.
Yeah. And if it can't drain out the, yeah, the antecedent moisture condition, um, that makes it to where it ponds even more. So.
Glad you didn't use the acronym.
Sure everyone wants to hear this one. Yeah.
I guess my, my thoughts are option was fairly cost prohibitive in my opinion. Right. To solve a very local drainage issue. It's a lot of money for, you know, what's nearing one point two million. A little over.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, um, yeah, one point over one point one, or yeah, one point one million essentially. Because, and yeah, with that, obviously there's a lot of storm or street improvements or paving, and you have to do all the paving with that, which just, yeah, makes it a, a much more costly project.
Um, perceiving this as a, uh, plays out, if the commission gave direction for pursuing option three, um, since option two is kind of inside of that, um, could that be bid out as an alternate? Um, so that in the bid process, we can see both and then like, and when it comes, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we could make it. Um, yes, we could do that. And so if, if it does, I mean, I hopefully have captured costs. Well, but when this happens and, you know, depending on how busy contractors are, it's always hard to tell. Yeah, we could certainly do it to give you a menu of one or the other. Because, because yeah, I mean, you know, in a scenario, option, there were the first attention basin, the property is really hard to acquire, or you can't get easements that you need. Um, and then you could just go with the second one to still provide some, um, that one we'd have to look at, I guess, to, to connect to that one inlet or to connect to the backyard drainage issue. Um, but that could be, I mean, we could look at that as we get into the final design, of course.
Yeah, I'm just thinking towards the end of, of funding this, like what we've done with other storm water problems there on Faith Avenue, we're able to pay for that project in cash through the storm water drainage fund. And so.
Yep.
Uh, depending on the size of this, that's, that's just my personal direction and preference, um, for, for funding the ultimate project is is coming out of that fund. Um, so that's where, yeah, if option two is inside of option three, we move forward with the full design of everything and then bid them out as alternates.
There'd probably be some efficiency to doing that simultaneously, but it doesn't look like it would be prohibitive to do it separately either. It really is just a, I mean, it could be a separate project if.
Yes.
And we might decide we might not need to do it depending on the results of.
Right. There would be some, um, because were they both outlet to that construction would just kind of right by each other. So yeah, doing them at separate times would not be ideal, but, but you could, not something you couldn't overcome.
Can you show me that, what you're talking about there? Is that that concrete flume?
Yeah.
So you're just saying you might size that differently if you're going to do three versus two?
Correct. Yeah. So right now, how I have it is both ponds standalone could be done. I think if we were to do both, it would, we'd probably design that concrete, well, we'd probably connect the outlet pipes and then design that concrete flume to be one larger one. Um, yes, something like that.
And where does that, where does that water land once it hits the flume?
So it flows to the, um, existing street to the curb and gutter. It would outlet to the street. Since, so that is something, so there's no underground storm sewer until we get to the northeast intersection. So unless you want to, um, the, the option one installing, um, storm sewer all the way up, it would still surface drain out um, to the curb. So that's why we, we do a pipe until we can, well, until we run out of cover and then it would be a flumed. So kind of just two curbs back to back essentially conveying water to the existing street. And that's where it goes now. So there would, there would be a look that you're channelizing water and putting it into the street. Um, but that's where the water goes now. It would just maybe get there in slightly different timing, but that's how, that's how storm water projects work. It conveys it in a more efficient way. So it gets there faster. Some people, um, you know, may, may or may not like, but, um, that's how you, uh, yeah, convey more water in an efficient way.
You're talking about putting eighteen acres worth of water right onto Wildcat Street through that flume? Did I understand that correctly?
Um, no, it, that, we would not have eighteen acres. I don't think training.
Okay. I think you mentioned eighteen acres earlier. Is that the whole, like all the way up to?
Thirty three acres is the overall drainage area that flows to that. Thirty three acres is the overall drainage area that flows to that uh Charles and Brady intersection. I don't know off the top of my head, but I think to the basins, we have four to five, maybe, maybe three to four. Yeah, I'd have to look. Yeah, it'd just be like the south fourth of the basin, so maybe eight.
Is that something you'll model before you would proceed with that? I mean.
Yes, or as far as model the the flow going to the street.
Yeah.
Yes. And and from the detention basin, it would be, you know, the the flow rates would be reduced from exist from, I guess, what's going on right now. So it does reduce the flow rates to assuming that it was an existing site with no development, no no residential, no commercial development at all.
But that's not reality. I mean.
Well, it would be. So that's why we we're making the pipe out of the basin small enough to match the flow rate, assuming no development was there.
I see what you're saying.
So it'd be, I I think, like a ten inch pipe. So the size of pipe right now to capture everything, let's say roughly fifteen or eighteen. Well, from the basin, then we're going to put a ten inch to the idea is that all that water flows into the basin, and we can use that storage, choke it down essentially, and just outlet through a ten inch to match the existing site conditions. And and we can do that in the two ten twenty five and one hundred for the first pond. And then the second pond, we can choke that down for two ten twenty five, not the one hundred. But it would still, it would be close to, or there would be some effects. I mean, it would be between the twenty five and one hundred and you know, then it gets into this this vague percent chance storm that you're realizing some benefit. Um, but it would be some amount above the twenty five and less than ten or less than a hundred.
So since we're talking theories here, what are the chances we cause more problems than we fix by pushing a hundred year rain out onto Wildcat Street through that flume?
It it would be no additional because that's where it's flowing now. So that we are not shifting in option three, the two detention basins, it all. So yes, it all gets there, even if it doesn't maybe seem like it does, but that's just because there's not any drainage ways. Um, I mean, there would be a perception of, well, you're channelizing water and putting it out to the street. It's where it goes now. Um, that's, I think you could, we can defend that based on the elevation information we have. It doesn't go there very efficiently, but that's just based on the existing um drainage ways of the area. So that's, that is something to consider. Um, but again, that's kind of any stormwater project. You have to move it faster and get it to a spot, and then people notice it. So it's, well, it's just because it sat in grass everywhere before, you know, it didn't have anywhere to go, so.
Think the, correct me if I'm wrong, um, I think the general consensus is like to look at detention basins, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So next step would be um probably a probably a work order for design for option three.
I think the next step would be in two weeks, bring it for formal vote for the commission to move forward with a work order. If you can't make a decision in this meeting, I I don't want to create something that you can't technically approve right now, so.
Yeah, and we and kind of, I guess, how I see this going based on all the structures and different things in there, I mean, my initial thought is we'd be once we got right into design and had a layout for all these pipes and flumes and everything fit in, um, you know, we'd come to you with an update, probably showing the extent of the construction, because some of it, um, you know, there's some unknowns with with what we may get into for some of the areas. Um, so we wouldn't, you know, take it all the way and assume yeah, you're going to take out the structure because we're too close to, or you know, something like that, we would come to you for provide some update of of some sort before we finalize design. So maybe like a thirty percent layout to get uh commissioned buy off on.
Where you've got the flume designed there. Is that that's not intended to detain water at all? It's just a passage wa- a passageway?
Correct. The flume does not detain. Yep.
Would there be any value to having detention at that site?
So you don't have the cover or you, there's not enough elevation change if we are going to surface flow. Um, or if we're going to outlet to the curb. If that makes sense, since there's no underground pipe, we only get, I think, well, and I can profile, we probably get like two feet and so if you dug down, I mean, there's just not, you need four to five feet for a detention basin to probably really provide anything. Otherwise, you wouldn't get um much detention there, because that is where I looked at too, of if we could have it down lower. Um, but yeah, not enough elevation change.
Comfortable with looking at the the two detention basins, and then we've got the capability of peeling one back if we don't think it's going to be, you know.
Right.
Worth it dollar wise.
And and like I said, property acquisition wise, easement wise, then it's determined, yeah, we could split out the one or the other depending on.
And we could, yeah, at that point, we could choose to do the project simultaneously or separate, so. It's a fairly large cost savings, though, so it's, I think it's worthy of looking at. Have any other questions for Jared on this item? Thanks.
Thank you.
Brad, do you have anything you need to add or you'd like to add?
Very good.
Oh, I don't. Yeah, he's good. I think everything that he gave is explanatory, so uh coming up with the decisions now going to be the the biggest part, so.
It'll be on the uh regular session two weeks.
Can you make sure those are sent out with the cost estimates?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is two F specials on Cedar Ridge lots transferred to the land bank discussion. City Manager Marsh.
Uh Commissioners, it's your December thirtieth uh twenty twenty four meeting. The land bank board accepted the donation of three lots in the Cedar Ridge development. We need to decide what uh essentially what we want to do or what you want to do as a governing body with the with the specials. Uh, in your packet, you have the total uh remaining balance due, what's past due and due on those lots for specials. Included in there is also the taxes that were automatically abated for each lot, uh, so you know what kind of numbers you're working with. Um, we have somebody interested in one of those lots, so I'd like to be able to get with get back to them and and let them know what the plan is moving forward. Uh, just in 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 some just ballparking ideas to stay consistent with the Golden Bell Heights developments. Um, potentially offer the lots at seventy five hundred dollars per lot with a rebate of twenty five hundred dollars to the uh builder owner when the certificate of occupancy is issued. If they just want to buy the lot to have the lot next to their property, then they don't get the rebate, but it's still seventy five hundred dollars, so.
And I know we went through this fairly extensively when we were discussing the um the donation. Um, City Attorney Martin, if I remember correctly, and City Manager Marsh uh stated it, but the actual property taxes, ad valorem taxes due were abated, but specials do not unless we direct them to be correct.
That's correct. At the time of the land bank's receipt of title, all past due ad valorem taxes were forgiven. Special assessments were delinquent at that time. They were not forgiven, but they're just out there. They also continue to accrue, but they're not technically doing owing. They're just going to stay out there and uh you have the ability to defer abate or reamortize or any combination uh with respect to the past due and future special assessments. You could do that uh by ordinance, and that could occur proactively if you wish to on one end of the spectrum, completely abate all of them, which would mean get rid of them. Or you could uh just maintain the status quo, which means that in any negotiation with any prospective purchaser, the treatment of those could be negotiated on a case by case basis. It would obviously be a lot to ask for someone to pay uh all the past due special assessments, and they probably wouldn't ever transfer. But you could do uh any combination of abating or reamortizing those, stretching them out into the future. Uh, and do the same thing on all three or do something different on all three.
Just general thoughts on the the residential lots. I don't, yeah, I don't, I think it would be pretty pointless to try to pass those off to a buyer of a lot. Um. I doubt we'd get many takers on that.
And I guess my perspective, seeing these, the past due was somewhat of a sunk cost, remaining balance due that with the two residential lots being at ninety two hundred, that gets us pretty close to the seventy five hundred for the sale price. So we're um in my mind, specific to those residential lots, it's, yeah, the sooner we can get a mechanism to sell it, if we've got somebody who's interested um and there, we can sell them for seventy five hundred dollars, then we're able to make up some of that that we're expecting to get, and then that property gets back on the tax rolls, so. Um, the wild card in the whole situation is that commercial lot, um, I don't have as much um um opinion or or understanding of of what's a good technique um with that. Um, in general, though, um, BKADC Director Goodell sent out a link last week and um K State Research and Extension did a webinar on land banks where the gal who leads the Pittsburgh, Kansas land bank presented and talking about, um, so it was just timely for having this discussion of having a development agreement, which is what we have there at Golden Bell Heights. Um, so then that that's what kind of codifies that whole reimbursement scheme. So, yeah, just making sure that whatever we do decide is clear and um easy to communicate to potential buyers, because that's what um we'll get, get it out of the city's hands and back to generating revenue.
O- one point, Commissioner, there all are three. There's no commercial lots there.
Oh, really? The big one is a resident.
Correct.
Okay, I was misunderstood. Yeah.
So I'm assuming that would go uh to the planning commission to get replatted or that larger lot? Yeah.
Well, I think, oh, which lot are we talking about? Are we talking about the corner lot or the seventeen point three acres behind it?
Okay, I I always I was talking about the the corner. This still aren't three. Okay, cool. What's the rest of the commission thinking?
Uh, just kind of a knee jerk reaction I'm having here is that I don't want to abate specials if somebody is just going to have the lot next to their home. It looks like I'm I'm looking at this correctly, so that the corner lot by the big lot, so the entrance on the south side of the south entrance there um is not part of this. That must be owned by a different party, but the second tier end, so the second lot to the west, which is right next to those duplexes on the south side of that, if you can picture that. So I don't want to abate sixteen thousand dollars worth of specials for the owner of the duplex on the east to just have an extra place to park a camper or something that we probably don't want. So I guess my appetite right now would be to be flexible. What what's the remaining term on those specials?
Yeah, twenty four to twenty eight. Twenty eight. Yeah, that's what the packet says.
So in that smaller lot, the specials are seventeen hundred dollars a year. Um, and this is block six lot two, so there's sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty seven. This is this, uh, I'm sorry, the proposal here says taxes abated. Is that the ad valorem taxes? Do you know what is that? Does that include the specials?
Block six lot two.
Okay.
Uh, fifteen fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty two, past due ten thousand seven fifty seven, and the remaining balance due nine thousand two hundred and forty.
Gotcha.
So are you saying don't abate any of it or just abate the past due and have the current on? What are you, what are you thinking?
Well, I think we probably have a bond or some other, something else for those specials, right?
Yeah, it's almost paid off.
Well, so it's probably two thousand twenty eight, right? Like the the payments.
I thought, then at last I looked at it, they didn't line up, which was interesting.
Well, so in any event, I think my uh preferred uh way forward would be that we could recast those however it made sense. I mean, we've got, we could put that on thirty years if we wanted to, so we could just say, hey, yeah, it's there's looks like about twenty thousand dollars. So the, and again, it this sheet doesn't break out specials and ad valorem, so I want to make sure I'm clear on that. But it says a past due of ten thousand seven fifty seven from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty three, remaining balance due nine thousand two hundred and forty. So I'm assuming that's just the specials. Okay, so we could put that, I mean, if somebody wanted to own that lot and pay it off over twenty years, it'd be a thousand dollars a year, which I don't think is crazy.
Yeah, and that's that what City Attorney was talking, we can reamort. I can't say that word.
Yes, I think that would be kind of a combined deferral and reamortization, because we're postponing the payment, bumping it well past two thousand twenty eight, and we're reamortizing it, so the same amount is paid just over a longer period of time. Yes, that would be allowable, and then you could uh you could do that with respect to all the past due and perspective or just the perspective. That would be up to you.
And we could work that out in the real estate agreement that if um similar to the um you're paying seventy five hundred dollars for a lot, you get a twenty five hundred dollar rebate after the completion certificate is done. You could almost work something in there to where if there's a, if there's not a completion certificate present within two years, that the specials are assessed or something, or they remain assessed or something like that.
In the webinar too, there she was talking about clawback things to the li- land banks have an ability in those development agreements that if certain terms aren't met, then that property can come back into the land bank. Is that your understanding?
Like a reversionary provision that if you don't do A, B, and C, it gets, it reverts back to the land bank? You could do that. That creates some other considerations, you know, if somebody's building on it, what happens to all the value that they have installed on the property?
I just thought that was interesting.
What if there's a mortgage? But yeah, those those things you can do um it it by contract if both parties are agreeable.
But I like that that point of if someone's buying it simply to have a vacant lot next to their house, that doesn't really do much for the city.
Right, but they are going to build a house next to it.
Yeah, I'm willing to. I'm willing to give up on those special assessments that they're actually going to increase the value of the property.
Right.
Make us whole at some point in the future.
Maybe that's the potential direction for City Attorney to see it. Does that afford us a a mechanism to do something like that? Uh, and how would that work?
I may have you describing again what it is you want to do.
So uh in a development agreement, if um say we get the development agreement says that then this person's going to build a house on it, and then they don't, and then it just remains a vacant property, then the city has an ability to then bring that back or no.
Assess the specials.
Yeah, because of, yeah, the willingness, from what I'm hearing right now, is to abate those specials if a house gets built and a certificate of occupancy is issued, but if it's going to remain a vacant lot, then amortize and have that the rest of that paid off over a twenty year term.
Yes, so it's somewhat of a conditional abatement slash amortization. And so I I think you could, I haven't seen that, but but I think you could have a contract with the prospective buyer that says, you know, if you do this, then we will do this. If you don't do that, then we will do this. And, you know, ul- but ultimately, the city commission has to pass an ordinance, so you'd need a an ordinance that conditionally does one or the other. But I am not aware of any reason we could not do what you just described. Yes. I I I think if that's the case, I'd recommend that we don't, you know, proactively do anything. We do that all in the context of approving a contract and then simultaneously. approving a contract and then simultaneously approving an ordinance that conditionally, that kind of aligns with that contract.
I think we're on the same page, I think.
And I think the key would be communicating the plan in a way that allows Mr. Marsh and staff to market those properties in a way that articulates what you all are likely willing to do.
Right. And that's, that's a key point of having a development agreement in place, like a standard form. I think that's what's worked well out of Golden Belt. So. That's something that can come to the commission beforehand. So then that intent is expressly codified in that. Default development agreement to where if then a buyer wants to change anything, then any of those changes come back to the governing body. Or those requests for changes come back.
Have you reviewed the CCRs for this development?
No.
Is that sufficient guidance? Do you kinda get the, the?
I, I do. So we need to come up with a development agreement. We'll bring to the commission for, we can bring it for review, or we can bring it for action, maybe discussion item, you can review it. And if it's good, you can approve it. If not, we'll go back to the drawing, drawing board.
Yeah, I think that would be good, just in case there are any minor tweaks to, just lost in translation, but I think the general rule is that you know, seventy-five hundred dollar purchase price, uh, completion certificate gets you a twenty-five hundred dollar rebate. If a completion certificate is not issued, we would like to clawback, if you will, those specials on the property, because the intent behind selling these properties at that rate and with that rebate is the future development on that parcel.
I think we could, I mean, just as a, a condition in the development agreement, that the, the specials would be abated for the first year and forgiven if the CBO was issued on a, on a home or something like that.
Yeah, and what, what I'm curious about is if that abatement can only happen when that, when the land bank holds title to the property, as if. That's, uh, that was, I guess, my mechanism question.
I guess I feel that's, that is an interesting question. I mean, we're paying them anyway, right?
There are some legalities to be.
There, there is. Yeah, we'll have to work through that. I mean, it speaks in terms of, um, abating special assessments on property acquired by the bank. So I, I could see an argument that it must be owned by the bank at the time of the abatement. As opposed to just, we owned it at one point and now we don't, but we're still gonna abate it. I don't know. I'd have to look to see if there's any authority on that. But I think during the period of ownership, you could conditionally abate it or conditionally do future things subject to the property owners following through on building a home, if that's what we require them to do.
Something, uh, abatement is granted, uh, following the completion of these requirements or, or something along those lines, the way it's covered. But then after it would transfer out of the land bank, it would revert back to that decision that was made while it was in the land bank. We're getting creative here.
Yes. Well, so if we, is the plan then that we would do the seventy-five hundred dollar sale price with a twenty-five hundred dollar rebate? And then so long as they build a home, we would abate all of it? Past and future.
That was my.
Yep. And if they don't, then we don't abate anything.
And it may be simpler than that, because using that, that qualify, having that qualify, and there are seventy-five hundred and a twenty-five hundred dollar rebate with the completions or occupancy certificate, that kinda takes care of it. Cause if they don't get the completion certificate or occupancy certificate, whatever, they would obviously be on the hook for the specials. So I mean, there's maybe a way to work that into simple language that does the same thing. If you consider that simple language.
Okay, we'll come up with something.
Yeah. We'll have it on study session and then can.
Yep.
Let's discuss and review. Okay, do we have any further questions, comments on two F? Seeing none, I would consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All second time? Oh, sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Dealer short on who gets that one in the minutes. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, would you roll call vote? Commissioner Whit?
Yes.
Vice, or Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned.